Well, thank you for L. Williams for that inspirational music. What a great song. What I like to do is to do some music so I can get the council up here to the station and then when the music's over we'll know we're gonna start. This time it's April 1st, 2014, 6:00 PM. We're here at City Hall at 116 West Bridge Street in Granbury, Texas, and I'm calling the council meeting to order. I'd like to call upon Neil Norman with the First United Methodist Church to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Texas Pledge. All rise please.
Mayor and council, I remind us that it is April Fool's Day today. I don't know if that was why I was asked to come and bring the invocation, but nonetheless, we know that the Apostle Paul said, "We're all fools for Christ and our ways do look foolish sometimes." With that in mind, let us bow our heads. Gracious and loving God, we live in a unique world today. We live in a culture today that says to us, "We're supposed to be consumers." The way that may look foolish says, "We are actually caregivers." The ways of this culture today say that we should get all that we can, but we recognize a way that is perceived to be foolish says that we give all that we can. We live in a culture today that says, "Whenever you're wrong, whenever somebody does you in a way that you don't like, you get revenge." A way that would be perceived to be foolish would be to love the enemy and pray for those who persecute us. May we today continue to adopt the way that looks foolish because therein we find peace, joy, and hope. Thank you so much for these men and women who are before me tonight, for their tireless devotion and commitment to the city of Granbury, for their love for this community and its people. Continue to guide them, grant them your wisdom, and may we all work together for those causes, even though they may look foolish. May we work for those causes that come for lives that are grounded in faith. These things we pray in the name of the risen Christ. Amen. Thank you.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American Charter and the Granbury community and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are incredibly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas the national service participants address and most pressing challenges faces our cities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from national disasters, and whereas the national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic neighborhood and the faith-based organizations that are vital to our economic and social well-being, and whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars, and whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism to making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas the corporation of national and community service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, Cities of Service, and mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 1st, 2014. Therefore, I, Neil Hewlett, the Mayor of the City of Granbury, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2014, as the National Service Recognition Day and encourage Granbury residents to recognize the positive impact of national service, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their community. And we do have a lot of those folks in this community, so reach out and thank them. Next of all, the City Council will go into their open-mic session. The City Council will provide an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on a posted meeting agenda during the open microphone, period, at one city council meeting per month. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city's secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and subject matter to present it. Only one person may approach the microphone at any one time, and only the person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than the individual city council members or the staff, and the speakers may file copies of their remarks or reporting information with the city secretary, who will make the information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council will allow a maximum of 30 minutes for the open microphone. At this time, I would like to call upon, well, our own Tony Allen would like to speak. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor. I need to give my address. Do you got it? Okay. First of all, this is April Fool, and I joke a lot, and I try to be serious when it comes to city business. I made a mistake on the last council meeting, and I wanted, I was hoping that Rita Kay would be here to hear this. We got an email about the water rates. I read the email, and about four, five days later, we had a council meeting. I should've reread it again. I thought it was saying that she thought it was a conflict of interest for one councilman to put it on the agenda when he owned a property. She didn't say that. I misread it. I apologize to the council and the citizens of Granbury. I made a mistake. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Tom Baker. Tom?
Well, to start with, happy birthday, Mayor, from what I hear.
Well, thank you.
Even though it's April 1st. I haven't timed myself on this one yet. It's a little bit longer than I normally speak. Oh, they started a clock already. I hadn't even identified myself. And I hope he won't start it until I do identify myself and then start. But anyways, Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. Tonight, I'm speaking in response to our Assistant City Manager's presentation about the hotel occupancy tax, how it's collected and dispersed. I don't have 28 slides to show, nor a pointer to use, but I'm going for my notes and thoughts. Hopefully, my notes are better than my thoughts are. About two weeks ago, Ms. Campbell-Husman showed numbers and figures about the monies raised and the monies spent over about the last 10 years or so. In 2005, approximately $400,000 was raised through the hotel occupancy tax. In 2012, about $540,000 was raised from hotel occupancy tax. About a 38% increase in tax. We also had about a 38% increase in rooms between that time. 533 were in 2005, about 745 in 2012. So we really haven't had a raise in taxes money. We have no raise in the inflation between 2005 and 2014, so we're really sort of flat in the tax, HOT tax being raised. Mr. Couch mentioned that there should probably have been a doubling in the HOT tax that was raised because of the conference center being open. It's not really a conference center. It's a civic center. It's a conference center only so we can spend HOT money on that. We can't spend HOT money on a civic center. Every month, the people that are concerned, the hotel operators, the bed and breakfast operators, HG Media and such, gets a listing of what's happening at the conference center. So many of them are daytime functions, very little overnight stays. Occasionally, we have a wedding or two in there, and we get some overnight stays from that. But those are weekends. We're not getting any overnight stays during the week, which is really what the conference center is supposed to be used for. So we're spending a lot of money on it and not really getting the return on our investment. We really don't have, you know, the other facilities here that are supporting tourism because the lake's getting dry. We don't have any industry that can bring in taxes any other way, so sales tax and property tax and the HOT tax is what really supports the town. We need to really keep spending the money on the, from the HOT tax, on tourism. People don't come to Granbury and leave with a so-so feeling. They leave with good feelings. How many of you have come here as tourists, as guests, seen the square, came back later and stayed here? People come here for Lowe's, people come here for Home Depot and such, but our tourists are coming for the square. That's the tourist focus. The lake is drying up. We've got a lot bigger beach now than we've had in the past, but, you know, they're coming here still for tourism. You know, we have lots of festivals that still need supported. You know, we are not gonna be able to spend all of our money where we want to spend it, but we still need to maintain what we're spending on tourism by having a tourism director, not just a marketing and communications person. Marketing and communications really hasn't had direction now for a year. You know, we're without one now for a while. We've been sort of stymied for a while. Hopefully, when Mr. Beeksford is here, that will change and we'll be able to refocus and be re-energized and spend our HOT money in a better way, not just the way it's been spent in the past and such. So please remember where the money's coming from and how it's being spent, and it needs to be spent wisely and hopefully bring in still more money for our occupancy and our tourism and such. Thank you.
That concludes our open mic. The next item we're gonna move into is the consent agenda, the first one being the approval of the amendments to the council meeting of March 18th, 2014, along with the consider and approval of closure of streets for the following events: the Blue Hulk 5K and Family Fun Run, the Fourth of July Celebration, the Fourth of July Parade, and the Fourth of July Fireworks. Council, you've had all the opportunity to look these over and to look over the amendments. Are there any changes or amendments to any of these consent agenda items? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second? I have a second, Councilman Parsons. Is there any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The consent agenda is approved. Now we move into the deliberation agenda, the first one being a public hearing regarding the request of Nancy Dobbs to rezone 603 Doyle Springs Road, being a 2.17 acre tract of the Millam County School Land Survey Abstract Number 348 from Light Commercial to R10 Residential 10,000, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for the said rezoning. I'd like to call upon Scott Sobchek to talk about this one a little bit.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request by the applicant to rezone the area that's bounded in blue from Light Commercial, its present zoning classification, to single-family residential R10. I can tell you, this was actually rezoned Light Commercial by the city in its comprehensive rezoning and approval of the comprehensive plan in 2001. So when they, when the city initiated a comprehensive rezoning of the entire city, some of the properties, and this is one in particular, were thrown into a classification, non-conforming classification, as a part of just drawing general district boundaries. So what the applicant is proposing to do is actually take this back to its conforming classification, a single-family residential. Its use is consistent with the request. Both P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval as presented in order to get this back to its conforming classification.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this matter? Now I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any concerns or debate about this?
Mayor, I have one question.
Councilman Allen.
Scott, is, the other property around that, it's all residential, nothing commercial, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Council, any more discussion? This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the order provided for the said rezoning.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The rezoning is approved. Our next item is number three, and I'm gonna go ahead and read three and four because they do go together, is a public hearing regarding a request of Mike Brown for a Pacific Use Permit to Allow Sales of New and Used Autos in a Heavy Commercial District and Consider the Approved Ordinance Providing for the Said SUP. The property is located at the corner of Highway 377 and Sardius Boulevard. Also, there's a public hearing regarding the request of Mike Brown to preliminary plat, a 10.31 acre tract of the Joshua Minetti Survey Abstract Number 351 as Lot 1, Block 1 of the Mike Brown Dodge Edition, and consider and approve this preliminary plat. This property is located at the corner of Highway 377 and Sardius Boulevard. Scott, I'll call upon you to give us a little information on this one, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council. As you mentioned, this is a two-application proposal on a single piece of property. The property is currently vacant. You can see that its present zoning classification is Heavy Commercial. It's bounded in the darker red. It is located just to the east of the Dodge dealer and just to the west of Sardius Boulevard, the entry boulevard into Gemstone Estates. As mentioned, it's undeveloped. I do want to mention that Heavy Commercial allows for new car sales by right. So if the applicant were actually proposing a, say, a Hyundai facility or a Honda dealership for new car sales only, they wouldn't be going through this public hearing process. What's perpetuating the SUP is the used cars that they're wanting to do on-site as well. So the site plan that they've submitted in accordance with the SUP application shows and delineates where those new used car sales are on-site. Specifically, that's where the interest of the SUP is, to allow for the used car sales on-site, not for car sales. I want to make that very clear. So during the P&amp;Z deliberation, there were some concerns from the adjoining property owners on this SUP request. See if I can get back to... Yeah. So the P&amp;Z imposed three conditions on this particular piece of property relative to the SUP application. One, that all deliveries shall be made utilizing Highway 377 access. You can see on the site plan that's attached as your packet, into your agenda packet, that there's one approach off of 377, and three off of Sardius Boulevard. So that first condition is saying all commercial deliveries shall be made off of 377 in order to keep it off the residential boulevard. The second condition, all access drives shall be gated and locked after business hours, and typically, that's what, at least the times that I've driven by the Mike Brown Ford dealership, all the gates are locked after business hours, and that's typically the standard for what this particular businessman franchisee does on his current car dealership. The third condition, the north approach on Sardius shall remain gated at all times. When I read that, that seems a bit unclear. Maybe it needs a little more specificity from council when reviewing this. Let's go back to the site plan. So you can see the northernmost approach onto Sardius Boulevard, and I will defer back to, you can see the, across the street, the adjoining residential lots where that northern approach is. It sounded like there was some concern at the P&amp;Z meeting from that northern approach about commercial deliveries and trucks stopping there. I do want to mention that that's a fire lane entry point. So I'm gonna have to defer to the applicant to maybe help clarify on what his proposal is on the use of that particular driveway. Is it for commercial egress? Is it for emergency response, fire, ingress egress? In order to clarify that. So going back to condition number three, the northern approach on Sardius shall remain gated at all times. My concern, all that says is there needs to be a gate there. It doesn't need to be closed, open, or closed. It doesn't address commercial deliveries, locked ingress egress, whether an OX box is there for emergency access only, so we need some clarification on that point. On the plat, there's a picture of the elevation of the buildings for your reference. On the plat application, this is a preliminary plat. As a part of the preliminary plat application and prior to developing and harvesting a building permit, we need to show water and sanitary sewer loops. We have three variances associated with the preliminary plat, first of which is a variance to 39 and 45, not to extend an 8-inch sewer main along 377 or Sardius Boulevard. I can tell you, the sewer line goes around the backside and parallel Sardius Boulevard just to the point where Gemstone Estates on the eastern side stops, just south of that, and then the sewer line traverses and supports the Toyota dealership, and there's points of connectivity to the south and to the east. So our subdivision ordinance, the philosophy behind it is we provide points of connectivity when lots are platted out, and in this case, there's no need to do that as that point of connectivity to and through is already accomplished to the adjoining lot, the Toyota dealership on the east side of Sardius Boulevard. Our engineer is supporting the variance request as submitted by the applicant. The second variance is a variance to 310 and 410 to not improve Highway 377 to an urban standard template, and the third variance to 3684 to not provide a commercial standard sidewalk along 377. Again, we have our standard notes that at such time that 377 is built to an urban standard, i.e. a curb and gutter standard, then those improvements will be made by the property owner at that time. So the plat itself is fairly cut and dry. It does have water and sewer to sustain the development, and it has utilities. The to and through requirement is basically met. You have a letter from your engineer in your staff agenda packet saying that he supports the variances, the P&amp;Z recommended approval of the supporting variances, and the preliminary plat as submitted, and the P&amp;Z recommended approval of the SUP with the conditions imposed as previously mentioned. I do want to direct your attention to the notification halo map. You can see that there are three adjoining property owners that have filed a protest or that have appeared at the P&amp;Z meeting that had comments not supporting it, so we actually delineated where those are. They're highlighted in red. They comprise a little over 4% of the adjoining property within the notification halo, and after the P&amp;Z deliberation, they recommended approval of the SUP with the three conditions that are delineated in your staff report, and at least from my standpoint, the third condition needs to be refined a little more to the staff and administering the SUP. So with that, Mayor, I think that's the synopsis. If you have any questions or council has any questions, I'll be happy to entertain any.
Scott, what I'd like, what I'd like to do was, if I could, call upon the applicant to go ahead and define or address the concerns of Mr. Sobchek real quick so we've got those clarified.
What, could you pull the plat back up, please? And I'm Mike Brown. The, the northern access is a fire lane. Is that correct?
That's correct. So when you look at the plat, there is a dedicated fire lane easement. When you look at the plat, that is a dedicated fire lane easement that goes to the back of the property, and obviously during DRC, our fire inspector requested that that easement be dedicated for ease of access and not having to wander through your car inventory in order to get to the back portion of the building, just in case he needs to get back there. So the question is really on the gate, that there was a condition about the placement of the gate, but it doesn't say whether or not it needs to be, like, similar gates, open and closed all the time, or was there heightened concern about commercial ingress egress from the, from the, that particular drive?
Okay. The northern access was designed for commercial delivery, primarily parts, and they come at different hours. Sometimes they come into the day, sometimes they come at night. The P&amp;Z actually, if you'll pull, if you'll pull up those three conditions, that, the, all deliveries shall be made utilizing the Highway 377 access drive. But what was discussed and what was approved, from what I thought, was that I would make every effort, whether it be signage or whatever, that I would make every effort to have these people deliver through 377. But it wasn't a, you know, it was, it was not, it was not stated like that, that there's no deliveries that can be made off Sardius. So I need to clarify that. And as far as the gates concerned, it's just at the back of the lot. It's not needed. I can do it either way. I can leave it locked or unlocked. If I, if I left it unlocked, there would have to be another barrier between it and the service bullpen to protect customers' cars back there. So...
And of course, this is discretionary, so council has complete latitude to do whatever they need to regarding these access points. They can stipulate that the 377 would be used for ingress and egress, or stipulate that 377 ingress, the Sardius for egress, because when you look at this, a commercial delivery truck traversing around there may have a little difficult time turning around. I don't know.
Well, they will. That's, that's why we had to direct, the jut out building is the parts department, where they could just come in, back in, deliver the part, and then leave. And instead of, and you can see the difficulty. Normally, those are done in bobtails, sometimes regular vans, but, and sometimes, you know, bigger trucks. It just depends on how many parts they have and where they're going at what times. But, but that's what it was originally designed for, and like I say, when we, when, when the P&amp;Z talked about it, I had made it very clear that I could ask them, you know, I can ask, I can ask all of them, I want to, but that doesn't mean they're gonna do what I asked them to do, but, because, you know, if they can't, when they come through the 377 gate, if it's after hours, they're gonna have to go through, either go completely around the building. I have an issue with cars being parked there with damage, because, you know, I, I wanna, I wanna make sure that they've got clear access, egress, and access to it, so that was my, that was my original thought, and that's what I told P&amp;Z. So that was my understanding.
Scott, is there a little more clarification or what you're asking for, I guess, right?
Yes, and it's really up to council.
Right, right.
Again, I can certainly see the adjoining residents' concern regarding commercial ingress, that they don't want a truck stopped there, maybe opening a gate if it's gonna be closed, or kind of pulling in with a larger truck into a residential boulevard when you have maybe more, I'll say more direct, but good, good quality access off 377.
I can see the concern, but that's, that's probably, you're probably talking about a five-minute issue.
Okay.
I mean, they're stopping to open the gate, get in, deliver their part. They don't want to be there any longer than they have to. I don't, I don't, I don't believe there's any instance where I would get over one delivery a night, and sometimes they don't deliver but every two or three days, you know, so...
Can they, just a question, can they ever deliver at the existing store where you make deliveries now? Just say that case, that came up, where then when you took the delivery, you could transfer it over to the other, the other store. I mean, that's, is that possible?
No.
Okay.
Because they're separate franchises.
Oh, okay, okay.
Dodge won't deliver to a Ford store. They're kind of narrow-minded. They're kind of narrow-minded about that.
I know how that goes. I've worked with you in the motor a long time.
You should know.
All of your access currently is from 377, right?
Huh?
All of your access currently is 377.
Yeah, that's the only access I have right now.
Was there a discussion about that third or the northern gate there being a, you talked about it being a fire lane? Was the idea that that would be a breakaway gate like we put in residential areas? Is that what you, was that part of?
No, probably, Mickey. What we normally do on that, Ms. Parsons, is we put a combination lock on it and the fire department has that combination so they can get in. And if not, those saws don't, as a matter of fact, they can saw it quicker than to do the combination. But they have, the fire department always has either a key or a combination to the lock, one or the other. And normally, the way I do that is I configure the lock to where there is a key lock and a combination lock on it. There's two locks on it. So, you know, I can, I know.
And that's currently a seizure you have for your existing lot.
Yes.
For existing dealership.
Okay, council, if I could, I'm going to, we've answered those questions to Sobtek, but I want to go ahead and open it up to the public hearing. Just stand by. Mike will probably have some more questions for you. But I'm going to go ahead, this time, I'm going to open it up to the public hearing and we'll get back with the councils. The first person I'd like to call upon is, I'm going to butcher this, I know, Reiner. Is it Reiner? Okay. Oh, Patricia, okay. Patricia Reiner. Well, I was.
It's me.
Go ahead and state your name and address and?
I will. My name is Trish Reiner, and I'm speaking today because I live at 203 Sardius Boulevard, directly across from one of the proposed driveways to be included in the design of Mike Brown Dodge dealership. As a professional in Granbury, I understand the need for growth of big business in our community. Without large business base, Granbury must heavily rely on other avenues for its economic growth. However, as a homeowner and a mother of two young girls, as much of a proponent as growth as I am, I hold the firm belief that growth should be done responsibly and with the best interest in mind of not only the business itself, but also the neighbors it affects. My concerns as a homeowner and mother are as follows. The plans, as I understand them, are, do not include a fence to block the sound that will emanate from the dealership and the sight directly out the front windows of those homes that have voiced their opinions, including mine, of the rows of cars across the street. My concern on that respect is that the value of my home will be reduced due to the unsightly view. And the plans also I see include driveways, which I fear gated or not, will cause an abnormal amount of overflow traffic if left open, including both delivery trucks and those wishing to test drive vehicles in our neighborhood. My concern is for the safety of the children who frequently ride their bikes, walk their dogs, and throw their footballs in our street because there is no park or play area anywhere near our subdivision. I understand the dealership will be our neighbor. However, precedents have been set in other areas of Granbury where businesses neighboring subdivisions such as ours implemented measures to ensure homeowners were not adversely affected by their presence. What I would like to ask Mike Brown and the city council to consider is to implement the philosophy of being a good neighbor and implementing a fence along Sardius Boulevard to help reduce that sightline of cars and patrons and help reduce the noise, and consider a permanently locked gate and extremely limited access on the Sardius side of the dealership. I understand now the 24-hour access gated portion. However, when the kids are at home during the summertime, that 24, it needs to be more of a 24-hour locked access because those kids in the summer, they're going to be playing in front of my house during that time. And I'm very afraid that those cars coming in and out and the delivery trucks are not going to see those kids playing up and down that street. And that is a huge safety hazard. I believe there's a compromise here that will benefit the homeowners directly affected by the new dealership without affecting the goal of the owner of the dealership. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Our next one would be Ellen Powell. Raul or Powell?
It's Raul.
Raul.
My name is Ellen Raul. I live at 213 Sardius Boulevard. And my concerns are along lines of hers of the increased traffic within our neighborhood. We already have test drives from their service department and their car lots going through our neighborhood rather than going down to the light. They cut through our neighborhood to circle back around to the dealership. It's not always a great thing to see, but, I mean, they're already doing it. How much worse is it going to get when their egress, they got three entrances off of Sardius? Three. Three. That's a lot. The other concern I have is that third entrance, and I understand that that's a big issue, but it's supposed to be used for deliveries, especially at night. During the summer, the kids are playing on that street during the night because it's just too hot during the day for them to be outside playing. They go in the evenings and at night when it's cooler. The other concern I have with that was it's loud enough when they beep up, back up those trucks to the dealership now when there's a field between us. The fact of the matter is, they're going to be in my front yard. And in my front yard beeping trucks all night long, nobody's sleeping. Nobody. And we hear it all the time. We see it. The other concern I had is if that's going to be used for deliveries, the planning and zoning commission said that they were going to look and see what our street is rated to handle traffic-wise. It is not the same surface as 377 at all. It is a concrete street. I didn't know if that was ever done. Did they even look to see if that would be rated to handle that kind of traffic, I mean, nightly deliveries? Also, the land is raised six to 10 feet from the street, and I took a picture from my front yard. And right now, Mr. Brown has stated that he was planning to put 10-foot live oaks. If the hill that that is going to be residing on is six to 10 feet high, that means the trees will cover the hill, and that's it. It takes 10 to 20 years for those trees to mature to a level where they would actually screen anything. I have a 25-foot live oak in my front yard, and unfortunately, it wasn't as big as I thought it was going to be. It just doesn't screen a whole lot. So, that was another concern. And because it is 10 feet higher than the street, six to 10 feet higher than the street, depending on where it's at, that high, that means their lights are going to be so high up, they're going to shine straight into our houses. I mean, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't need my yard lit up like daylight at night. And then the final thing that I had was that currently, Mr. Brown utilizes a loudspeaker intercom system on his lots. He's a field away, and we can hear clearly everything they say, clearly. They're going to be across the street. They're going to be less than 200 feet from my front door. That's really close, and that's really loud. You know, I was looking at, I mean, I know that the city ordinances say that between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 11:59 p.m., the noise rating is a decibel level of 90 decibels is the maximum for a non-residential area. My question is, is he's non-residential, we're residential. Residential is rated at 85 decibels, and I'm just not sure. It's supposed to be rated at where it's registered, where it can be heard. Is there anything that we can do to prevent that kind of a loudspeaker system from invading our homes more than it already has? Those are, the only other thing I had was the fact that Jacent, the entrance to Jacent, if you look on that little plan right there, that's the service department entrance that crosses on Sardius at Jacent. That means we're going to have every service department vehicle going in through that entrance across from a bus stop full of kids. And, I mean, there's a bunch of kids that live on that Jacent cul-de-sac. And again, like she said, we don't have a park. We don't have anywhere for the kids to go to play. They play where they have, and that's the streets and the sidewalks and the yards. But those are my major concerns. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Richard Winters.
Hi, there, council members. Good evening. My name is Richard Winters. I live at 211 Sardius Boulevard. I'm a property that's going to be adjacent to the Mike Brown addition. I have some issues with the SUP. Evidently, there is some things that I'm still not clear about, the special requirements that the P&amp;Z put on him as others access to the back gate. I was under the impression that the front would be used for deliveries. Now, I'm getting the impression that they can exit out onto Sardius if needed. Why are we allowing them to exit out on Sardius? That's a no-truck route. Trucks 10,000 pounds or more pivoted on a residential street. So, why are we allowing them to go up that way if we're making them from the front? They should be able to go right out the front the same way they came in. I also have an issue with the screening device that is proposed for landscaping with trees. Three-inch live oak trees, it's going to take several years for those things to grow and be a screening device. I know there's been special requirements made in the past, Lowe's being one, where there's fence was put up between the homeowners and the business. We're asking for something similar to that as well. Well, we don't want to look at our front porch and see the 2015 car lineup for Dodge. Our property values are going to decrease because of this. You know, we're going to have to put up with the lighting, the noise, the excessive traffic. Who reaps the benefits from this? Not the homeowners. The applicant does. You know, we have to live there. We had to put up this day in and day out. We don't want to. The increased traffic with all the extra drives, as the previous speaker brought up, is the service entrance is off Sardius. I believe that's going to be driveway number two if they're coming from the highway. That's going to be a main entrance for cars coming in and out. You know, in my 17 years of observing traffic, you know, driver behavior, their habits, one thing I know is, you put them in a parking lot, they're like water. They're going to take the least pass resistance to get out. That's going to put them out on Sardius. Sardius is a heavy travel road because it's a pass through to old Granbury Road. We don't want the excessive traffic coming through there. You know, Mike Brown currently has one entrance for his Dodge dealership and his Ford dealership. Deliveries are made in and out of those entrances. Why can't everything be made out of the entrance off the highway for his new dealership? Why does he have to come out back? I'm not in favor of the SUP, like I say, because I'm not clear on this. Requirements were made by the P&amp;Z. I ask for more clarification from them before the council approve that SUP. That's all I have to say.
Our next speaker will be Claudia Southern.
Hi. I live at 226 East Pearl Street, and I own a property on Sardius Drive at 205, right across the street from where the gates to the dealership will be. I understand that when this usage of 377 was approved, Gemstone was not in existence. So, I think perhaps that there is precedent for it just going along, but I would ask you not to do that. In other places in town, we have screening fences between commercial properties and residential properties. If you'll go and drive along the Lowe's backside, you'll see a very nice fence that goes up against the South Grove Properties. Even on Waters Edge Drive, where there is a small dentist office in comparison to this particular project, there is a screening fence between that dentist office, which looks like a house, and the old, well, the apartments that are there. I think that the Brown family and the series of dealerships that they have have been a tremendous boon to our economy. You will always see Mike or one of his family members at charity things, and they are generous, and they are active, and they are involved. So, I don't want it heard that I have anything wrong with people expanding their business, and I know that this will be a quality place. However, even though it takes only five minutes for a big truck to get in and out of there, it only takes seconds for a child to be killed if they run in front of a car. And that's bad enough, but a truck's even worse. And children don't act rationally, or at least mine don't. So, I would ask that we consider this in light of the things that have been done in Granbury in the past. We've always had business right next door to residences. Look at the square. We have apartments upstairs. Down Bridge Street, we had family farms. So, it's not that business and residences can't be together, but let's try to do something on this very huge project that would make things just a little bit better for the families that live on Sardius Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more comments from the public?
My name is Doug Long. I live at 209 Sardius, which is that same group of residences. I don't have little children. I don't have a lot of issues, but I have two major issues. One is if the third north entrance is used by trucks of any kind, it's just going to do damage to our street. I know there's rules about the weight of trucks on the streets, and that's one of my main issues, is having access to Sardius for the delivery trucks, whether it's delivery of parts or delivery of vehicles. And the second is the noise and the lights being an issue with my value of my home at some time if I do decide to put it on the market. It's going to hurt all of our property values along there. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council.
Thank you, Doug. If you could, Doug, fill out one of those sheets for me so I can turn that in to secretary, please.
I was going to be here.
Thank you. Do we have any more comments from the public? At this time, I've closed the public hearing. Council, you've had an opportunity to listen to several citizens living in that surrounding area there, and they've voiced several concerns. Have been, most of them, a lot of them based around the entryway, noise, lighting, things like that. So, at this time, I'll let the council discuss some items. Is there any discussion, council?
I would like.
Councilman Couch?
If Mike could come back up.
Okay. Mr. Brown? You knew you were going to come back up, right?
Mr. Brown, I, given what you heard tonight from the neighbors across the street, do you see any compromises or solutions to their concerns when it comes to a screening fence or the PA system for noise? You know, I've listened to the PA system. You know, the screening fence, I'm not going to screen my business in. If that's a decision y'all make, then I'll, you know, I'll just figure out what I want to do next. But the PA system, I had some people trying to check in with Jerry's Toyota. They said they had some kind of deal where they texted their people. All my people don't have iPhones and that kind of thing, so I don't know if that's viable. But I did have a meeting with my people and asked them to try and dial more directly to departments instead of paging. If there's an issue with the noise that it creates, then I would be more than happy to address that. Everything we've done has been, you know, when we do these things, when do we start these projects go? Eight, nine months ago?
It was quite some time ago, but the official filing of the applications to the city was probably not too long ago.
Right. But preliminary talks about what we can, can't, should, shouldn't do have gone on for months. And we tried to design this around the parameters that we were given, within the confines of what I can and can't do to run a viable business. We worked with, we had the light issue on the, when we did the Dodge and the Ford store, and we shielded the lights. There won't be any direct lighting going into the houses or neighbors or yards. They're going to be shielded. I took the wattage down from 1,000 to 450 to try and, you know, make that a better situation. I've done everything, you know, that I possibly can. I can't, other than the paging, and I know on a certain day, I'll, you know, I can hear the racetrack in Crescent, you know. It's, you know, when there's wind and the weather's a certain way, it's going to carry. And I'm sure that's probably an irritant. I wouldn't want to be sitting in my house and listening to somebody page to come to my office or. my office or whatever. And we would, you know, we've tried to address that, but as far as the noise issue itself, you know, it's not constant paging. And the other thing is, if you look at the design of this building, the jutted out, the part toward the residential area is solid concrete. All the doors are on the other side. The store itself should block noise coming from the Ford store. So I don't know how else, I don't know how we could better design it than the way we've designed it, under the constrictions of trying to keep the trees in, that TexDOT, as y'all are very familiar with, when we designed the deal, there's nothing I would have liked more than to have a center entrance, two lanes wide, and not even have to have an entrance on Sardius. I couldn't do that. TexDOT wouldn't allow it. So I feel for the residential, you know, it was, this has been a commercial piece of property for a long time. And I do feel for the residents. I'll do everything I can to be a good neighbor, but like I say, we've designed this thing with Scott and the city, you know, as close as we possibly could to doing what we were supposed to be doing.
Just for my own clarification, the farther, the farthest northern entrance on Sardius, that is a fire, that is a fire entrance, fire truck entrance?
Correct.
Okay. Is the island south of that, then, it looks kind of like an island to me, is that landscape potential there?
Ah, yeah.
What is that?
Well, you know, Ron, it's all landscape.
So that, so the...
It's buffer, is the area, is the area in front of the, you know, right, just south, just south of it is buffer area.
Okay, so between those two entrances there, the fire and the second entrance, that island is landscaped?
Yes.
Is it possible that you could really dress that up, do some berms, rocks, really make it look nice so that the people across the street are looking at that versus the building?
I've never built an ugly store. I, you know, I don't know about the berms and that kind of thing. I really don't know what the landscaping is on it. We've got, you know, we have the trees. They require shrubs. We want it to make, we want it to look good, but I'm not going to put berms up that's going to inhibit the view, you know, of the dealership, but, yeah, it'll be landscape now.
A lot of potential there.
It'll be whatever the city tells me to do is what I'm going to do, you know. Whatever the requirements are, we kept, you know, one of the other restrictions we had, which we wanted to do, was keep that real pretty grove oak trees right there. And it, we designed, we designed around that, too, at great expense. So, you know, like I say, I don't know, I really don't know what else I can do.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilperson Myers?
Hey, so I just want clarification on that entrance. You're saying that that entrance is required? You have to have that entrance? Or can this, can this be redrawn to where they didn't need that entrance there?
I can tell you, when we went through the Development Review Committee, looking at the plat application and where the building footprint is, there's the plat. Our fire inspector looked at the entrances to and from and around the building, and most commercial buildings, you'll know, whether it's Kroger or, you know, some of the new retail shell buildings coming in, he likes the loop around. He likes to get access, 180 degrees, 360 around the building footprint. So his commentary in the plat review was he needed, for ease of access to the backside of that building, the fire lane, in order to get to the back of the building quickly. And when you look at the plat, the second and the first entrance, and where they have used cars, he was fearful that he could not get to the building quick enough. Time is of the essence for him, and that's why the fire lane is positioned like it is at the third entrance.
I guess my concern is, I drove this and looked at it, and I can see that, but I can also understand the residents' concerns about the children playing in that area, and also the devaluation of the property, you know, with noise and lighting and street repair. So is there any type of alternative to that third entrance?
Yeah, from my standpoint, if the city says we do not want the third entrance, then my take is we need to go back to the fire inspector to have him reevaluate the access configuration of this site.
Because there's a cul-de-sac, right, at that second entrance? It's pretty wide.
Yes, yeah. Let me go back to the, you can see it there.
Which doesn't affect those two homes, the way I saw it, the two homes going into the cul-de-sac, that's the side of their property, so they're not actually having to look and view the cars directly across the street. Versus the third entrance, those are the fronts of the houses. So you're not affecting as many residents near the cul-de-sac area because their front doors aren't looking directly across the street versus the third entrance where they are looking directly across the street.
And there are some things that you can do with the third entrance, based on those conditions, obviously. You can, and we've seen this before, for example, at the access points in Harbor Lake, you can say, and that's why I kind of highlighted the confusion on the third condition, it's a little bit vague and ambiguous, where if you want to say that that's emergency access only with a Knox box, but that's where Mike's, you know, information coming to the podium is valuable, because I don't know how important that is for commercial deliveries. By the way, I'm reading the conditions, is commercial ingress off of 377. You can condition commercial egress off of Sardius, or you can say that that's emergency access only, or however you want to do it, but it needs to be tempered with the concerns of both the residents and Mike's interest to operate his business.
Mr. Brown, I have one question. Would you be willing to screen just that third entrance?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen?
Mike, I tell you, I come back from work, used to, before I got restaurant business, and I go up there to eat. And a couple of times, I've seen trucks out on the highway, you know, they'd be out getting their gate open, and you're driving in there, you've got to be real careful because 377 is a lot of traffic on there.
Right.
I can understand these folks back here, you know, in their neighborhood. Bought a house in Virginia, and they changed the flight. I knew the airport was there. They changed the flight pattern and started coming right over top of our house. And so we knew it when we bought it. These people knew what they were getting whenever they bought their property. But this Toyota, is that John New or is that yours or is that Jerry Durant's?
That's Jerry's.
All right, now, is that property, it's right across the street from him, right, where you're going to develop?
Yes.
Do they have an exit coming out on that side of the street?
Up, yes. On Sardius, it's not, it's not that far down, of course, you can't get there, but see where the access is.
Yeah, 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 real close. Okay. Is that, his trucks don't go in there, though? They come off of 377, don't they?
I think he's got that configured, yeah, where they just come, I don't know where they go out there or what. I, you know, I hadn't paid a lot of attention to it. I'm assuming they come in that front entrance.
How far down, Mike? And I know looking at the drawings, would you say where that, the last entrance way is? How far from the end of your property would it be? Is that 1,000 feet, 500 feet? For this, for this third entrance we're talking about?
Is it, how far is it from?
From the end of your property, not on 377, but the other end?
350.
I've got a question. Is there any way that...
Councilman Perkel?
Is there any way that additional property could be found for the children to play with? You know, I'm not saying we'd like a lot, but I'm just saying anything to help where the kids can play safer with it. Very handy.
I haven't even thought about it. That's, that's going to be drainage. That's, I mean...
Yeah, but the kids don't play when the water's there.
You know, Mr. Perkel, I don't know. I've got liability issues.
Yes.
There's a lot of things we would like to do these days that we can't, and without that being, with that being in my name, you know, I, you know, I don't know what I could do. I'd have to check. I'd have to get some legal advice.
We'll have the city look into it.
Yeah.
Anything we can do about that.
That'd be good.
Councilman Perkel, I'll tell you that we've already looked into that, and there, we have a legal opinion from Wayne Olson that says that we cannot force Mr. Brown to donate land for a park.
I'm not asking for it. If some does show up.
I think he was just asking if the availability were there, you know, could I do something? And, you know, of course, if kids are going to play out there, I'm sure not going to run them off anyway, but I haven't, you know, I, I drive through that neighborhood on occasion. I'll sometimes take Old Granberry Road down just to look at, just to come a different way and go through there. I, you know, I'm not here for any confrontational debates or anything else, but, I mean, it's a normal neighborhood. I know it's got kids, and I'm, and I've got two grandkids myself, but it is, it's not a gated community. It's, they're public streets, and all I can do is emphasize to my people, you know, safety, and I can certainly, and I don't, I don't have a problem even telling my people, you know, not to do, not to come through there, you know, and I'd be happy to. But like we discussed with this delivery situation, I can tell them to do a lot of things. That doesn't mean they're going to do it. But, you know, but I can't, you know, I can't really answer your question right now. You know, I certainly wouldn't mind if, you know, depending on how the land, how the drainage situation works out, what the, I don't know what, you know, we're going to have to take a lot of dirt out of there to lower the, lower the profile of the property and look at it, and, you know, it's, it's, it could be, it could probably be turned into a real nice little field, because, I mean, I've got to maintain it anyway, you know.
Mr. Brown, I think, you know, you've answered a lot of the, or you've addressed a lot of the questions that have been brought about by the citizens and the council here, you know, and the children playing is one of the biggest, is a biggie to a lot of folks because, you know, naturally, we want our children to be safe anywhere they're at, but, and I think we can look at possibly doing some postings out there, some signage, and letting people know that there's children playing out there on the gates, out of the gates, even through the neighborhood possibly if we need to. And, you know, we could work on doing some of that. Your lighting, I think you've addressed that. I don't know if it's really, you know, like somebody stated earlier, there's all kinds of people that live near businesses, and, you know, those issues are going to come about. I live right across from a sewer treatment plant. It was there first, but, you know, it is what it is. And there's, there's still people building the homes out there in that area, so they know that Mike Brown has got a business over there when they, when they build those homes. The noise, I think you're going to address the noise. I don't think that, you know, I hear them all, I hear them a lot of times at Car Wars as I go to, the loudspeakers, but, I mean, I think that's something that you'll probably be able to address and at least limit it to the needs to be. The test driving, I don't think we ever really talked about that. Were you aware that they test drive a lot of the cars through that area there?
It's not a company policy.
Yeah.
It's just like I said, and I, and I can, it's very easy for me to put out a memo and I'll send, I'll send you a copy. That being said, I've got over 100 employees, and they don't always do what I ask them to do, but I can, I don't have, I think, actually, I think that's something that should be done. You know, I think that should be addressed and with my employees and telling them that to get a, to get a standard route, a demonstration or a test service drive route. We try to drive our cars, you know, when we do a repair, we try to put at least 20 miles on the cars. Why they would drive, be driving in that direction, I don't know. Well, I do know that Old Granberry Road's a little rough, and if you've got a drivability issue or shocks or that kind of thing, you want a little rougher road than 377. But that being said, they can drive, they can come all the way up to Fall Creek. It's not an issue, and I can, and I can, not only can I, but I will address that.
Councilman Couch?
Yeah, I just, I want clarification from Scott on P and Z, the number three, that the northern, the north exit, right now as it stands, will they be able to make deliveries through that gate?
The way the condition reads, the northern approach on Sardius shall remain gated at all times. To me, that, all that means is, you put a gate there, it doesn't say open, close, it doesn't limit access, ingress, egress. And that's, when I read it, that was a concern I had, based on, from what I heard, some of the residents' comments. If the council wants to refine that, they certainly have. This is the opportunity to do so.
And primarily, that was from the, from the fire chief?
The fire, the fire chief was looking insofar as access to the back of the building, and dedicated a fire lane off the plat, and that's why he kind of lined it up with the back of the building for ease of access. So even, as Mike Brown said, even when they have a situation out there, emergency response situation, they have to approach the building from the backside off hours, he's going to get to the building, whether it's, you know, bolt cutters at the lock or whatever the case is, he's done it before, so Knox box, it's just, we've seen, we've seen situations where there's limitations at the gate, and the council has a complete latitude to say, here's how it's going to be used, here's the situation with emergency access. However you want to address it, certainly you have the latitude to do so. If you want the city fire inspector to reevaluate this, sands, sands the access point, you know, we're looking at kind of a reevaluation of redesign, possibly.
Let me say, though, even though number three doesn't, doesn't say, it just says gated, number one says that all deliveries should be made utilizing Highway 377 access drive. So that would mean that no deliveries would be made through that gate, right?
It says all, yeah, it says all deliveries shall be made. To me, that needs, if it's going to be ingress and egress off of 377, it helps to clarify that. So you can, you can, you can, you know, pull ideas out of the, out of the sky when the language is somewhat vague, and unfortunately, it came this way from P and Z, about all deliveries being made as opposed to egress off of the site, whether or not that infers...
I think the question was, could deliberately made through, through the north gate? I thought that's what I heard.
Well, that's...
Well, no. My concern was, you know, to me, this reads like, it's clear to me, based on what P and Z has written, that all the deliveries will come off 377. The, the, the third north entrance, there will be no deliveries in or out. The first and second off Sardius, to me, would, would be a potential to have the exit of those deliveries. That's how I would interpret what P and Z has done, but maybe that's not what their intention was. But that's, when I dial it all down, that's the options that are left based on what I'm reading. So if you disagree with me on that...
I didn't attend the P and Z meeting, so I talked to city staff that was present, and when I read the conditions, that's the question that I had for them, is what defines deliveries? If they had a question for the third northern approach, does that mean that all commercial deliveries ingress and egress off of 377? Then it needs to be specified. If the northern approach is going to be used off of Sardius in a certain manner, that needs to be specified, just, just for clarification for the property owner and peace of mind for the residents, possibly.
Councilman Parsons?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, I guess my first inclination is that I'd like to see both of those two northern entrances closed and a screen that lined up, uh, adjacent, uh, with the fence behind Toyota and go back to the end of the property. Uh, is the backside of the property gonna be screened there between there and the open field or not? Or is, is that just gonna be open field with?
No, we planned it out.
A back, the, back, that's, that dotted line. Need a fort or something. The, uh, the northern, I guess that is northern, right? Yeah.
Sardias got a fence.
The northernmost line there. I mean, when we see this one, we see that the property line goes all the way back to the fences of the housing.
That white line that you see further into the property is a track line, so when you plant that out, that's going to be dissolved. And let's look at that.
We've got a.
Back one, there, stop right there.
Right. Where the parking places are, Mickey?
Uh-huh. And then the trees.
And the tree, yeah, the northern edge of the property.
Yeah.
That is gonna have a fence just like Jerry's got on the back of his, all the way up. Is that, does it go all the way up or here?
So, what, can we talk about closing those two exits? What, what kind of hardships does that create? I understand the northernmost exit may have to continue and, um, possibly at, at a minimum.
May I clarify something? Just wanna say, I'm, I'm telling you wrong. Look here, there's the double-sided wood fence with masonry columns at the very back of the property. That's the screening that's required because of the, you know, the different zoning. So yes, there is that Jerry-like fence there. This is strictly fence off the bullpen.
Okay. This is, this is, this is cyclone?
That's.
Is that a winder or wood fence?
The, a double-sided wood masonry, wood fence with masonry columns, 25 foot on center, is along the backside of the property, up against the residential areas on the north, uh, boundary there. Somewhere there. Yes. Up there. That's correct. That's where it's required to be. That's where, that's correct.
Yes. And on the other, where you were pointing the first time, that's a wood fence that will go right there. No, it'll go back, back, right there, and then come back toward, come back south.
That, uh.
The, the, the bullpen will be fenced and screened from view.
Is this the bullpen?
No. Where the parking area are. Yeah, yeah, right there. Uh-huh.
That is screened from view.
Yes.
Then there will be a screening here?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
There's nothing on Sardias.
We think, we think the fire marshal said it was really a great idea with this fire access.
The more direct access toward the back of the building.
So, she was getting traffic, it'd be awful hard if some kids want one out here.
That's.
Unless there won't be a screen here. I'm not too bad.
And it's just, this is what Josh, Josh, Josh talked about, it's a big, a big screening area.
Now, that's just an open, um, landscape area right there, that island in between those two approaches.
And is that where we talked about the large column of trees going in?
There's a lot of trees, a lot of trees going in. There'll be a lot of trees in that area too. I mean, as per, as per Horton.
And all of this, all of this on the back side of there is strictly, uh, pass, uh, passenger.
Yes.
There's no block doors.
There, there's a delivery door where that, where that entrance is, right at the back.
Okay, there's your east elevation, the third one down, come down three, and the only, uh, overhead doors that you see there, that's the service entry drive, and as you'll, yes, and if you go the rest of the way, you'll see none of these service shop doors are visible on the east side. They're all on the west side, therefore cutting down really quite a bit of noise. I fully enclosed the machine, uh, the compressor area too.
Or your egress is that the first entrance to come in, turn and come in is the service lane here, and they go out on the west side?
Yes. Second. Yeah, the second exit is directly into the service drive.
Second entrance directly into the service drive, and then there, pull in there, just a bit, and you got to take them on those five.
They go into that bullpen area.
Is this parallel with the burn or parallel with the landscape?
No, it's a little bit south of the, uh, island area.
It's centered, it, it's about centered in the, on the drive.
With your second one, right, Mike?
Right there.
Yes, yes.
This is that, this is that elevation?
That showed the doors. That's the doors right there. Yes.
And there are reset, quite a bit, some of it.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's a 150 feet or so back, I guess, off of Sardias, to the, uh, front of the service door.
So, what position does it, do we take this one and this one to put a bit of knockdown?
That wasn't my understanding, no.
What, what if we took that, that was, that was our?
Then I'd have to reconfigure the whole deal. I would have to, I'd have to, in some way, somehow, take, I know, if that, if that, if I can't deliver from there, I would have to take that second entrance in some way, make that viable for, make a wider lane or do something. You know what I'm saying? Take out some landscaping.
Does Tech dot give you much here, like any year?
No.
They, they do not.
They don't explain nothing to us. They just basically told us, that's what you get if you don't. Uh, the, the largest max it could be was 30 foot? 30, 35 foot?
They don't do, they don't, they don't grant anything that wide.
This is a Tech dot standard driveway approach, so we're a pass-through approving agency. It, it meets Tech dot standards on the throat widths and depths.
Um, do you know what the width is of that island I keep referring to?
75, 80 feet from Sardias coming in to the west, probably about 75 feet wide.
Wide?
Uh, coming from Sardias going east and west, it would be about 75 feet.
From Sardias toward the building at 75?
Uh-huh, about 75.
And with a 130 lengthwise, that's parallel to Sardias?
One, two, three, about 150. At the, one inch equals 50, so it's about, maybe about, not, right at three inches there.
Well, if you trimmed down from 75 and made that a much larger, uh, pathway or driveway to where the, the turn into the, onto, uh, Sardias on the second, does that, does that help you? Cause from a landscape.
Well, it's not a matter of whether it helps me or not. I'll, that's what I'll have to do if you're telling me, I, if, if this council tells me I can't deliver on that third, deliver, uh, out of the third entrance, I, I'm just saying, I'm gonna have to redesign. I, I, I'm gonna have to do something, 'cause I, I don't want trucks coming in. I, you know, they, these, I, I just, I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna need a larger lane than, because that's why we, that's why I set this up is, 'cause it's, it's, it's just straight access. It's, it's, it's easy in, easy out, it's fast, uh, it, it, you know, so, you know, I don't know. I, I, like I said, we'd just have to relook at it.
Mike, can you give us some, some sense of how many deliveries?
One.
A given week?
One, uh, no more than one a night.
And those are 18-wheelers?
No, most of them are bobtails. I mean, when you're talking about 18-wheelers, there's very few of them that are like these, the big, big rigs that you're talking about. But.
But all, all the automobile deliveries will be on 377, or all, what, what I'm seeing, uh, P and Z said was all deliveries will be off 377. So your, uh.
I, I know, I know, Mickey, that's what that says, but that's not what was, was what was, the, what was discussed, and Ron and I were here, and, and what was discussed was that I would make every effort to get deliveries made off of 377.
Mike, would you, would your, uh, deliveries, uh, vehicles be done at the back gate too?
Yes.
It would. And how often would that happen?
Uh, you know, uh.
You'd like to say every day, wouldn't you?
Nah, I would. Uh, maybe two or three times a month, maybe five times a month. Uh.
Depending what sales are.
Yeah, and, and, and it has to do with allocations and what time of year it is and a lot of other things, but I mean.
But let's say if they pulled in a third gate, they'd pull straight in?
Yeah.
And where would they turn around at?
The, the delivery area, they would probably, they would just probably, i- i- they could either come in or go out. They could come in the third entrance, go out 377, or they could come in 377, go out. You know, I mean, it, it's, it's, we can, and, and we, we can kinda instruct them, but just like you said, I've, I've, I've posted signs on where to deliver cars and I've had them stop in the middle of 377. You know, and, and, and unload, literally unload the cars in the middle of, of 377 in the, in the turn lane. Yeah. Uh, I've seen them do it here. I've seen them do it down, down at the Kia store, uh, you know, so, I mean, these people.
I, I think that's the fear that our, our people are expressing tonight too, that if you have that third one down there, that's what's gonna be happening in their front yard. So I, uh.
Well, they won't, the, the, they come in the lot. They, I mean, my, if it's a, if it's a delivery for me, I, I don't hardly ever get night deliveries on cars. Uh, every, every now and then, we'll get a Saturday delivery or something, but most of the time, they're, they're during working hours.
Because you have to bring somebody in to unload them, or do they just put, leave them in the lot?
No, actually, the way that works is, is the drivers themselves unload them and then they have a, they have a packing slip, a delivery sheet that we inspect, then we inspect the cars and sign them and then, but they, 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 they physically take them off of the trucks themselves.
What would happen if we put, or if you put signs out there, no truck parking, you know, on that side street, would that hurt you?
Other than me at all. I don't care if you put speed bumps up. Hey, you know, I, I, I'm not, I, I, I know the concern and I'm, I, I really, I really do, and I can appreciate the concern, but, you know, I'm not taught this, it, it is a public road and, and, and it is zone commercial. And I'm not talking about trucks coming, I'm not talking about a, a UPS or trucks just constantly coming in and out and in and out and, and it's, you know, yeah, it, it's probably, when one's there, it probably will be a, uh, somebody, if they're looking, they'll probably notice, but, you know, I, I, other than that, I, I can't, you know, and I can't, I can't call them up and say, hey, don't deliver any cars to me but so-and-so, or, or, or don't bring my parts past so-and-so. You know, they, they kinda dictate to me when they're gonna do what. And, and, uh, I can put signs up that, uh, if, if the city doesn't come by and threaten to find me for illegal signs, I can put signs up that say, you know, you know, trucks only or delivery, you know, next exit or whatever. I, you know, I don't have any, I don't have any problem doing that, trying to, trying to, trying to direct everybody in there. Uh, but the problem I've got is, 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 you know, is, on the, on the delivery, on the, especially the car deliveries, I've gotta have a turnaround area here, and that, that was my intent, was when we, we, we were designing this, they said we had this third exit to use. So what, the way we designed it was basically if they wanted to come in 377, they could come in 377 and then exit Sardias, Sardias and, and not, you know, not be backing into stuff, hitting things, going, you know, but that was the, that was the intent anyway.
Mayor, I do wanna bring forward a procedural issue. Uh, some of these plats, as you're well aware, council may be well aware, that has statutory times tied to them, that if they don't act on a plat, it's automatically approved by a force of law. And looking at the time, date stamp from the P and Z hearing over to the next available council meeting, um, if, if council decides that there, and there's ample room to actually table this if you want to without getting into some statutory issue. So if council decides, hey, we've discussed a lot of issues between the two, you know, between the city and the joint property owners and the applicant, and if they could take some of the issues brought forth by the city and the residents back two weeks and look at what they can do site plan-wise, council has the latitude to table this without getting into any kinda statutory 30-day, um, problem and rehear this on the 15th of April.
Thank you, Scott. That was, that was one of my next question or concern, because it sounds like Mike wasn't under the clear understanding, Mr. Brown wasn't under the clear understanding when he was, when he left the, uh, the, uh, P and Z meeting. And so, uh, that is one item that, uh, this third entry is, is an item here, I think, that needs to be cleared up between Mr. Brown and, uh, off of the P and Z again also, and, and yourself.
And we need to make sure we have the clearest language possible. Everybody understands the rules of, of how this property's gonna be developed and operated and, um.
And you're exactly right. There are some issues right now that's been brought up in this meeting by citizens and some of the council that possibly could be injected into the next, into a, a additional P and Z meeting on this particular item. So, council, that, you.
It's, it's hard to delay a development two weeks, but I, I think, from what I understand, we wanna get this right.
Understand it, yeah. And so, council, that, that, that's exactly right. Uh, what Scott has rolled out to you is a, is a, is an option here that we might wanna consider.
I, I got a question for you, Mayor.
For me?
Yes, sir. If, if we go back, couldn't we go back and look at the minutes and see how it was? Y'all taped a minute there too, like we do here?
For the planning and zoning commission? Absolutely. We can provide those.
Y'all could listen to those and get back with us. Now, let's say, let's say if they did say what is written here, then would Mr. Brown have to go back to P and Z, or we, we can overrule that with 340?
No, sir. You, you have complete discretionary latitude to alter, change, modify, stick with whatever, whatever council wants to do.
And council, I, we're not, we're not denying that what was said was said, but Mr. Brown wasn't under the understanding, and now we've, we've also looked at it, I think, and, and we don't, there's some things that we'd like to see done maybe probably differently, so, uh.
When I read it on one of them, it sounded just what Mr. Brown said, and the other one, it looked like the back gate only. So I was confused on that end.
And I was confused as well, so it's, it's vague language. It needs to be cleaned up.
Councilman Couch?
I don't like to delay anything for progress, but I think it's, uh, if we can get it back on the agenda in two weeks, I think it'd be well worth it.
I think so.
Get everything went air and down. But, um, will that give P and Z an opportunity to take another run at that?
It'll have.
It, it's not required, as long as when you table it in your motion, you specify the date and the time. We don't have to republish this. Uh, basically, the council will reopen it here at City Hall at 6 o'clock on the 15th. If you specify that in your motion, I think we're good. You have, also have the latitude on any zoning case to remand it back to P and Z, but really, this is kind of crossing the T and putting the dot on the I, really clarifying those conditions that P and Z was trying to get.
Joint, um, a joint P and Z council?
Don't need it.
Don't need it.
Uh, one thing that we can do, uh, and it's, it's really council's discretion, however you wanna manage it, but one thing that we can do, and I will do as soon as I get back to the office tomorrow, is have Angela, my administrative assistant, finish the minutes. They'll be in draft form because they haven't approved them yet, but send them out to all the council members for their review before we reopen the hearing.
Can I ask Mike a couple more questions?
Councilman Parsons?
But let me, look, if, 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 I was under the impression this, this area here in front of the parks was a landscape area which, you know, as I've told Mr. Couch, I wouldn't, I, I have no problem burning it, putting some rocks up there, making it, you know, I want it as pretty as possible, but, you know, I mean, I don't, i- if, if I can widen, if I can widen the drive where the service department is and, and take off some of this burn, take off some of this area here, I can make the, I can make the drive wide enough to where I could deliver out of the second entrance. So, I mean, I wouldn't mind, I, I don't mind doing, I don't care if you take the third entrance away. This was the way we were told we had to do it.
Well, we've, we've got additional information from our citizens since, since.
I understand, I understand.
I understand. We have, we have people concerned and, you know, rightfully, rightly so.
I've got, I've, I, there's room here, if, if the city allowed me to have a little bit wider gate to where.
Entrance two.
You know, where, and, and cut off about a, a, well, I thought it was landscaping, which it's not, so I don't have a problem. I just need, I, I just need. I just need, I, I just need to make a, I can make a wider drive that would give us access to the parts, you know, off of the second exit.
Off the second exit, mm-hmm.
That, that, that would, and, and like I say, you can, I don't care what you do with the third exit.
Make the third exit strictly fire, if, if the fire marshal requires that.
He did.
What would be the possibility of making the second exit or second driveway inter-only?
No.
And then the exit, because I was, I was wondering, where, where's your, uh, the cars come in off Sardius and pull in there to the driveway, where are they, uh, delivered after service completion?
Uh, you know, I, Mickey, I wouldn't want it one way. I, I've got customers that are coming in and out of service department, they're going in and out of parts. I'm asking them to drive all the way back around, transfer the, the, the building and go back that way. That, there, I, if I had a one-way there, they ain't gonna, they're not gonna do it.
Mm-hmm. Well, I was assuming that the exit would be the, the first exit off of the 377 there. So, we get the fire marshal to look and see if, uh, that second entrance is enough, and then we could do away, totally do away with the third?
We can look at any altered site plan they did.
Since you're gonna have a larger driveway there to the, to the east of the...
We'll look at what they submit prior to the next available council meeting, if it's tabled, and have our fire inspector comment on it.
Well, you know, I, I can leave the third exit there.
If that's what he wants, yeah.
I mean, I, I don't...
And it could be, it could be strictly a knockdown gate. By that, I mean a, a gate that's only operated when there's a fire.
Right.
Okay. Well, we let the fire, fire marshal determine that, cause it'd be cheaper if you didn't have to drive, build the driveway, right? The third, the third drive.
Well, I don't know if it's, if it's tabled and I gotta wait another 60 days or 30 days.
Two weeks. Two weeks, 15th.
You know?
15th. And that's just to get the clarification from the fire marshal and also address some of these other issues? If, if that's what they choose to do.
I'd really like to get the third entrance out of play as far as the neighborhood is concerned.
And, and council can direct staff, if, if they, if they're going to modify the site plan, you can direct staff in your motion, once, if you're tabling it, that the intent is to, council decides to do away with the, or tie down the third northernmost entrance to a certain standard, either closed knocks box, unaccessible, no ingress egress, or just do away with it. That direction needs to come back to the fire inspector as well.
How about if we, we made the motion and we said, okay, the third, the third entrance is deleted, and we're gonna use the second entrance, they're gonna widen up the berm there, and he's gonna rock it and that kinda thing, uh, subject to fireman, uh, fire marshal's approval? Problem?
I, I would, my opinion is I would rather have the fire inspector report back to council before they make their legislative decision on this site plan. It's a key issue.
All right.
How about if we, if he did a motion like that, and, and if the fire marshal said it's gotta be there, it's gotta be there? Then we can move on. Sure?
Can I just comment that I think for the city's best protection, you should probably allow the fire inspector to review it and then make a report back to you on his findings before you make a decision now? Because he's not here tonight, and I don't think we should guess what he might or might not say.
Agree. And that's one of the reasons, that's one of the stipulations on table, and it is getting him involved, and, and he could, he'll email the council or however he wants to.
Email, or, or the city, city manager can direct him to be present after he gives us written findings of the modified site plan, he could be present at the meeting as well.
And wouldn't have to go back to the P&Z. It could be determined at the next council meeting, which would be the 15th.
And, um, is it possible that we could maybe have a landscape elevation on the island?
You can request of the applicant anything that you desire, so if you want a, uh...
That would help me. If there was a landscape elevation on just that, on that particular part that faces those houses. Some waterfalls.
Counsel, any more discussion? This time, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to, to, uh, table this, uh, item until our next council meeting, with, um, the fire chief coming back with the recommendation on that third, uh, entrance, and then also to have, uh, an elevation of a, of the landscape on that island between the, the north, the far, two north entrances as they are presented tonight.
Okay, Councilman Couch, uh, if you could, go ahead and make that motion one more time specifying the date, which would be the 15th, and the time, which would be 6:00.
And location in these council chambers.
Yeah, in this council chamber, and, and then proceed with the other requirements.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we table this item until March 15th.
April.
Excuse me, until April 15th, uh, in council, uh, chambers. At 6:00 PM, uh, where we'll have the fire chief report on his recommendation as it relates to the north entrance, and that also we will see a landscape elevation of the island that is between the two north entrances, um, with a wider lane between that island and the building.
No. Existing. So, council, we have that motion. Do, uh, should I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Counsel, any more discussion on this topic? All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we will, we will review this again on April the 15th at the council meeting. Has been tabled. At this time, I will now declare the city, the Granbury City Council, which we will convene into open session, and that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the, pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney.
All right, you got it, Paul.
All right.
Councilman Allen is left still.
The council, the council will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken back in the session. Counsel, there's no further discussion. Council meeting is adjourned.